I'd like to call the meeting to order at 5:32. My watch says what does your clock say? I can't see it from here.
5:32.
Um, roll call? Claire Shaffey, excuse me. Tori Child, here. Leslie Johnson, here. Anna Klein. Sorry, um, I'm writing to get a person to take minutes. Dwayne Wallace?
Here.
Trudy Lynn? Philip Martinez?
Here.
Marie Minor, present. Jessie Smith, excuse me. Um, has anybody come around being called to the public? Because I invited people to come if they wanted to talk about that particular issue about deaf, deaf being deaf or hearing impaired. No response, okay? Then we'll move on to the agenda. Item number one, approval of the minutes of the September 17, 2018 special session. Um, let me point out something for Philip because he hasn't been here in other meetings. Um, it's really helpful for the people who later have to do minutes or later have to explain what went on in the meeting. If when you go to speak, you go through me as a chair. And then I made the habit of trying to say your name.
Okay.
That way they know who was talking. Of course, being that there's only two men, it's easier to figure out. And when it was one man, we could almost figure that out. Okay, um, anybody have any issues that were on the minutes? Any corrections? Did anybody not get a chance to read it? Well, since I helped write and have issues with that, thanks to Leslie Johnson, I did it together. Uh, I believe that we've heard the minutes from the September 17, 2018 special session. Is there a second?
Is that me?
Excuse me, Tori Child. Thank you. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those, those say nay? Uh, we have one, Dwayne, do you want to vote?
I can't.
Oh, okay, I wasn't sure.
Staff liaison is on, just do not vote.
Oh, okay, so we are three, five to zero. It's approved. Okay, fortunately, on, on this agenda, we have a right of beginning discussion on the requirements of a chair and vice chair for the committee on disability issues. Dwayne, you?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Um, it's just, it's brief, it's in the actual bylaws of the group on the responsibilities of the chair and the vice chair. Um, and I'm just going to go ahead and go over those very quickly. Um, in our bylaws, Article 5, duties of officers, Section 1, the chair shall a) preside at all meetings of the committee and ensure meetings are compliant with all rules governing the committee; b) appoint any ad hoc committee deemed necessary by the chair and or the membership and ensure such committee is chaired and that their tasks are expeditiously and effectively performed; c) ensure that an agenda for any upcoming meeting is submitted to the staff liaison at least seven working days prior to that meeting; d) ensure the proper decorum and procedures are maintained at all meetings; and e) ensure an annual report is presented to council and mayor at the first council meeting in June.
I'm sorry, would you repeat that again, please?
Ensure an annual report is presented to council and mayor at the first council meeting in June. And then, Section 2, the vice chair shall perform the duties, a) perform the duties of the chair during his or her absence, and b) act in advisory capacity to the chair and perform such functions as assigned by the chair. And I, and I just wanted to discuss a little bit, especially why I think that the annual report is... I'm not aware of other committees or commissions that do it. Um, uh, usually those committees and commissions will have a, a more receptive council liaison that takes care of those, you know, either brings them up during the meeting or whatever. The reason why it's important is because we have to justify while we're here. Each commission needs to do that, especially in a town where we have 25 sub odd commissions and committees, which is probably too much, to be quite honest, for a town our size. You know, we need to justify that what we're doing is different and important, you know, to the city as opposed to, you know, well, these, these committees kind of duplicate and things like that. So, you know, that, I think that's a very important thing. I don't think it's necessarily been done before on, not just this, you know. Looking back at the history of this committee, um, it went a whole year, it seemed like, with meetings being canceled for lack of form. So, I, I would definitely suggest that, you know, as, as this moves forward, that we do, um, you know, it says to do it, let's, let's do that. Let's, let's have, you know, of course, with the assistance of, of the body of the committee, um, in developing, this is what we've done, this is what we know. At least that's my suggestion.
Quick question, and she had a question too. Uh, you said that the reports are due in June, and it was to the mayor and who was the second?
Mayor, mayor and council, the first council.
First meeting, okay.
First meeting in June.
Okay, um, yes, you had a question?
On the ad hoc committee?
Do you want to give your name? Trudy. Trudy, thank you.
Ad hoc committee, is that, can you define that?
Um, yes, an ad hoc committee is generally a committee, in this case it would be a subcommittee, designated for a specific purpose. Um, you know, whereas, um, the council does need an ad hoc committee specifically for City Hall. You know, and I, I can't, I can't even find what we would need one for here. Um, but it's possible that if, if there was a decision, you know, and as a group, that we would need an ad hoc committee, you know, apart from, you know, and that's, and ad hoc, an ad hoc committee is, you know, is a committee designated for one special purpose that's part of the larger purpose. So, if we had some, if we wanted a committee to review something, you know, whether it's, um, you know, some of the literature, and you would ask that. However, generally, that is not just members of the committee already. It's usually a member of your committee and then other people. So, you're trying to bring in more people in on the outside for that ad hoc committee.
Let me give a brief example of it because I was on the Bisbee Arts Commission. When we set up the event, the Bisbee Art Auction, let me tell you, we had one committee working on food and beverages, another committee that was working on allocation, another committee working on getting the funding, getting some funding for it, another one making a list of all the artists, you can get, you get an idea. We had to have several sub, uh, they would be called subcommittees in some of the organizations. This one's an ad hoc. Does that help?
I asked for clarification because in my memory, and my memory's not always accurate, the mayor told us that we can't form subcommittees.
Right, that's why it's called ad hoc. I would use the word subcommittee because I was misinformed.
Because when you're already a committee, you have to have an or a commission, a elected board, and I'd have to delve back into Robert Ruz's organs, it's been a long time. Um, you know, because they love Latin, you know, all those things, legal things.
Well, to the point.
You know, so it's specifically for, it's for this point, and that's it. Um, and, you know, we don't, we don't use subcommittees very often, you know. And there's, I'm sure there's more legal reasons why, but we have to probably reach out to, well, our city attorneys would then reach out to the League of Cities and Towns for that because their, League of Cities and Towns are the experts on things like that.
So, I encourage everybody to make enough, legal advice is from the city attorney. And if the city attorney can't answer it, they talk to the League of Cities. That's the stepwise procedure is what he just explained.
And the city attorneys, the attorneys serve at the will of the mayor and council and staff. So, generally, you have to, you know, if you, if, you know, we don't need every single committee member reaching out to the legal, generally, you know, if you have a question, you can pass it to myself or the clerk, and then move it that way. That way, there's not, you know, because if you figure you break down those 25 and there's six, you have 200 people at some point trying to reach out to, you know, worst case scenario. And I've already buggered our attorneys five times today for other stuff, you know.
So, questions go to either Dwayne or Nina Reeves?
Well, I would suggest through the chair to, you know, and then I can jump to...
Oh, chair is first.
Yeah, you know, all those things, filter for the chair and then have a chair. It's easier to have, and even from the staff side, it's easier for you to have a contact with one person than it is six.
Just like, again, Philip, because you were here at the previous meeting, um, every time you get a, an email, you are not to reply, reply off. You reply to Nina. Or it is, if you had, for instance, the chair's email, which I've been giving out, you reply to the chair, but you don't do, we can't do many more than two contacts with two people and it's breaking the open meeting law. So, we even learned another one, um, in the Bisbee Arts Commission, we learned the hard way. We were deciding about granting, and so, two of us met, then another, one of that person met with another person, that's considered breaking the rules because it was sequential. Okay? Days have changed, thank you. All right, any more discussion on our questions on item two? Okay, moving, thank you very much, Dwayne. Uh, item three, discussion and possible approval of a recording secretary and a backup person for the Committee on Disability Issues. It is very hard, as the chair of this committee, to also be taking minutes. You will see very sloppy handwriting, you will see missed information. If it wasn't for Leslie Johnson, the class, two meetings would have had some holes in it. But between two heads are better than one. So, um, are there any nominations for a, keep in one thing mind, I have to mention this now. I will be your chair possibly, this might be the last meeting. Um, I'm moving to Tucson, Arizona, I'm putting out a contract for a house tomorrow.
And the other thing is that this will be my last meeting as a committee member. I'll be resigning after this.
But hopefully you...
Because she's the city councilperson. Congratulations.
In December, right, you actually...
The first week of December, August 4th.
And I understand there's no more meetings planned for this year, so that...
And there are no nights available, no days available for meetings?
I will be sending a resignation letter shortly. And I apologize, folks, I never intended when I had resurrect this committee to be leaving, moving to Tucson. If you want to know why, I'll discuss it with you afterwards, but not now. Uh, okay, so, do we have any nominations for a person who can continue to be a recording secretary and a person who may not possibly be your chair? Or you can, when you have your next meeting, you will elect a chair and a vice chair because you're losing both. And hopefully by then, some of us are already in the process of getting other people on the committee to take our places. And we encourage all of you to do that. I don't just handpick it, you can handpick it if you want, okay? Anybody can encourage other people to become on this committee, hopefully choosing somebody who will show up for meetings and not just want their name on a piece of paper. Okay, um, recording secretary, do we have any nominations and a second for a recording secretary? I have a nomination for a recording secretary, and that would be you, if you were willing.
Me?
Yes.
My name, would you be, I'm sorry?
Tori.
Yes, I can do that.
Tori would be willing, okay, is there a second? And believe it or not, that helps also prepare you to be chair or vice chair. Okay, so, um, do we have, uh, I'd like to call for the, is there any discussion on that? Anybody else nominated? Okay, is there any, no discussion? Okay, I call for the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All, all those opposed say nay? Oh, Tori, it's yours, starting tonight. I'll stop taking notes short, well, I'll probably continue to take some notes. Second is LJ. The approval was five to zero, approved. That's also another thing we have to state for the records. And no nays, of course. All right, item four, discussion on clarifying the role of the Committee on Disability Issues as advisory to the council. Leslie Johnson.
Okay, um, this is Leslie for the recording. I just, I wanted to go over because there's been a lot of talk in this committee so far about fundraising and about subcommittees. And I just want to be sure we're all on the same page that we need to work within the scope of our committee. And the scope of our committee is to advise the council. We're here to come up with suggestions that the council can follow through with if they choose to. We are not here to be our own fundraising entity. We are not here to put on our own events, and that's not how we're going to be most effective. We're going to be most effective if we stay within the scope of what we're here to do. And that is to do most of our work between meetings. That's how committees tend to work. You go out in the community, you do your research, you find out what the needs are that the city could possibly be filling and doing better. We come back and we make suggestions. And that's, and we give our suggestions to Dwayne, to Anna, and then it's up to them to bring it before the council. That's how this functions. So, it's not our job within this particular committee to be doing our own thing out in the community. Our job right here is to bring back whatever kind of information we've gathered, whatever kind of, you know, ideas we've had, and discuss it and talk about what the work we're going to do within the next quarter, and formulate suggestions that we're going to give to them. So, I just want us to be our most effective. And we're going to do that by staying within the scope of, our scope of practice is what we say in the medical field. And, you know, because I just don't want to see, I want us to be taken seriously. I mean, we already had to work pretty hard to keep this committee alive. And I don't want this committee to go down the tubes or be disbanded again because people think we're a joke. And so, that's, that's just what I wanted to clarify, is that our job right now is to gather information, to research the community, to see what the needs are, and then bring suggestions to council. That's our function. And other committees are different, they do different things. I Bisbee has a budget, but their budget falls under community development. They do a very specific thing, we do a different specific thing. So, I just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page with that and that everybody understood that. And if I said anything wrong, Dwayne, you feel free to correct me.
I don't think you're wrong.
Okay.
Okay, this is Marie speaking. Um, the only difference that I have with what you said is that there are occasions where we may need, in our research, to send out mass mailings or at least significant mailings. And since we have zip nada zero budget, um, I'm suggesting that we find a way to raise a small amount, so we have, say, $25 to $50, so that we will be able to enable doing that contact. And also, it also serves another purpose, if we ever need to get any information from the city, we pay 25 cents a page. And if you want to have it, or somebody in the committee wants to be paying the 25 cents for each page, I'm suggesting that the committee gets a way to be able to do it.
My suggestion and, and my question is, yes, if we were to do mass mailing, how would you get the addresses? Because there are third party that agree to those, and it's a lot more than $25 or $50 to get those addresses. The city will not provide you. The city's not even providing for the service line warranty. We're not even providing the addresses for that. The company doing it is doing it themselves. Just, just, it's going to cost for something like that, a mass mailing, is going to be more than $25 or $50.
Targeted, we change it, targeted mail. Well, I'd...
Well, but even targeted mailing, you have to be careful because then you're dipping into HIPAA. If you're looking for specific things, you can't get the information on people with disabilities or handicaps or whatever else because that's not, they're not allowed to, you know, it's just, I, I, I'm doing this as part, I'm also a member of the CARP initiative here. And so, a lot of these things, and these are, this is with a group of law enforcement and health, healthcare professionals and insurance people and hospitals that have access to that stuff, and they're running into the same issues too. And that's with a much bigger, I guess, area to grab.
Tori, yeah, Tori Child, um, I can see where you would want to reach out to people, but there are other ways that it can be done. You can have volunteers strategically placed around town to verbally query what people are interested in. Word that would cost nothing.
Gmail or Gmail.
Indeed, there's media as well, but more so if you want that face to face, which I think is beneficial. So, you could have one person, as was explained with the ad hoc concept, gather a group of people to go with and then bring back the information if it were necessary. I mean, this is a bit premature because we're not in a circumstance yet that's warranting it.
Marie, another example, if we wanted to have an educational workshop, that we wanted to invite all people that had, um, issues with needing a wheelchair, a walker, et cetera, and we wanted to give them help of get their input on how the city could be better to be able to accommodate their disability, yes, we could maybe do some email, some Gmail. But if we have that workshop and we hold it at what other place the city happens to be in at the time, because the city is going to be moving from here, um, we might need to have something that was wheelchair accessible, et cetera, that, you know, there might be some accommodations that we can't meet. For instance, I would love to see at this meeting, if, when Claire is here and Jessie is here, I'd like to see for Claire, who has 80% deficiency in one ear, a hearing accommodation. And I understood there was such a thing, but I've never seen it employed to help her. At our last meeting, she struggled.
She used it last meeting.
She used it?
Tori speaking, yes.
Okay.
And, and the other lady, Jessie, was favorable of trying it herself. The process was explained during that meeting that these items can be asked for ahead of the meeting through Nina.
And not just, just, not just...
Any meeting in the city.
Any meeting, any person, any person. I mean, they, they stated, you know, in the agendas, anybody, any person requiring special accommodation, you reach out to Nina or Ashley, and they will provide it, whatever, whatever that is.
Right, how many do you have?
I don't know.
That's an important question. Could we have the answer for the next meeting?
Sure, I can just, from what I've, no one's ever been trying, they have plenty, they have enough that anybody who needs them, you know, they didn't ever turn anybody down.
If we got 15 people that live in Bisbee, would we have 15 of them?
If there are 15 people hard of hearing, I am sure they can figure something out for 15 people.
Okay, I'm, I'm just, I'm not trying to put obstacles in the path, it's just...
But also, also, I think we're drifting away.
We want to accommodate people.
Just, you know, we're drifting away from the discussion of, of, of the actual, what's on the agenda. We have to be careful of that.
The, the actual role of the committee. And I think if we were to have a workshop of that type to assess these in this meeting, this would be something that we would take to the council and suggest, why doesn't the city do this? That's under their purview. So, we are advisory, we are not a fundraising entity, and we are not an events committee. That's the point I'm making with this agenda.
So, to clarify, Tori speaking, Leslie, um, our role would be once again to go out and seek the information that the citizens of Bisbee are wishing and bringing it forth to the committee to present to the council.
And then, you know, as Leslie...
In a money-free situation.
As, as, as Leslie said, you know, it is then, the committee makes a recommendation, generally to the, to the, either staff or council liaison, you know. If there's something that staff does, that's what, you know, if there's some research that staff has to do, you know, but you have to understand, you know, I'm Public Works. It's, I have a very specific mission. And, but if there's something you want to bring to council, that's, that is, you know, the council liaisons can bring those and have those put on the agenda for discussion. And that's kind of how the whole, it works. And then, they, because that, you know, as the, there, we, the committee itself does not have any power to spend any money doing any of those, making any decisions. That, those are all enumerated by into the actual, um, the actual city council. They have that power by the charter, the committees don't. You know, and the charter is the rule of law, you know, between charter and code, charter and code, that's kind of how it works. If the charter says it doesn't give you the power, you don't, you don't have the power to do it. You know? And we, we have to be careful, you know, of that. Because I've seen, not just, seen other committees think that they can direct staff or they can do this, or, eh, that's not, that's not how it is.
And I want us to be effective, like I said, and staying within our scope is going to keep us effective. So, this is Leslie, Tori.
Thank you, Leslie.
Um, I'll just bring up one piece of factual, Marie, factual information is that the reason that Anna doesn't want to sit at our tables is because she has an illness and doesn't want to share. She's not antisocial.
Thank you, Anna, for your consideration.
Thank you, I don't want it. Um, I, okay, I'm going to move to item five, distribute the pocket, oh, do you, Anna, do you have a... Here, can we give an agenda and minutes to Anna?
I don't have any agendas on item one.
That's okay, yeah, she can take mine. I have the other one.
Okay, um, now, item number five, distribute the pocket guide to resources for Bisbee to be reviewed by each committee member prior to the next meeting. In other words, um, this was brought up this way so that we wouldn't go into a long discussion. Um, that's the way we phrase this one, so that people will do it on their own. And hopefully, it doesn't get stuck in a stack of papers like at my house and we never find it for the next meeting.
Do you want me to explain at all what this is?
Please do.
Okay, this was a project that originally came out of a partnership between Sympatico and the county health department. And, uh, it, it's supposed to be a pocket guide. It was originally intended for first responders, firemen, paramedics, law enforcement. And it folds up into a little book. The first version of it was all in green, and it was distributed, and those, I think they printed only 400 of them. And they all got distributed pretty quickly. And so, then Sheriff Danles had an idea that he wanted one of these for every city in the county. So, uh, we, we spent some time last year putting one together for every city in the county. And at our very first meeting of this committee, I came up, was there a guide to resources available? And we talked about the Legacy Foundations Guide, uh, that is available on the city website. But I also said that the newer, the updated version to this guide, which, because I work for the office that puts this out, has been sitting around. We got it all put together, Allison Williams, who works for the city library, she laid this out for us. I researched most of the numbers, but this was a while ago. And so, we, we talked at that meeting about me bringing in the, the most updated version. This is what we have, but this is still information that's about a year old. And all, Sympatico has set aside the money to do a, a print run. And at this point, we're talking about printing like 5,000 of these. So, but before we do that, uh, I just, this committee agreed that if I could bring in the latest version and distributed it, we can all look at it between meetings, uh, look, see if we notice any gaps, any services that are not on there. Um, maybe if we want to call numbers and verify that they're still working, um, and just come back next time we meet and see if there are any changes anybody wants to make before these go to print.
Tell her to answer. Um, I was going to say, um, how far reaching is that? Are any of these, we're just sticking local, local, or outside, how far?
Well, we agreed when we first started this project that there are some numbers on here that there aren't local resources for, like, we don't have a local suicide hotline. Uh, we don't have a local, like, reporting child abuse that goes automatically to the state. Uh, a few of the numbers on these are not local, but we wanted to put as many local resources as we could, include everything that we possibly can on here. But some of these numbers, I think at this point, are going to be outdated. Some of the names of agencies have changed. Yeah, I think...
Arizona Complete White Book.
Yeah, CHA is CIA now, and it was stated, just changed names when I did this, so, yeah. It's, um, but yeah, so, that, that's the goal with this, is to just look at it, get it as updated as we can, because the money's sitting there for, for the printing run. We just need it to be as updated as possible.
Because there's numbers not just on here, there's stuff off, because I work with, uh, was it Tin Town, uh, Royal, basically, anything that deals with food and everyone that's running it. And so, there's stuff that probably isn't on there, stuff... And so there's stuff that probably isn't on there, stuff I probably have somewhere else, but that's all I'm saying. Some of them are a little further out, some of them aren't. And some of them, the physical resources, like clothing, whatever, some of them are really outside the area. So what do we, that's what I was asking, what do we want on here? For, not just calling for services and reports, but actual, physical, they need something.
Physical, they need, well, we were trying, um, we were thinking of someone in Bisbee with no resources that we find on the street, what can we hand them that would help them get on their feet?
Especially with such a transient population, because the people who are in, typically, the people who are in Bisbee, who've been in Bisbee for a while, they know where to go for everything, you know? Whether or not they want to accept the help, that's, you know, the whole horse to water thing, right? We do get, you know, especially certain times of year, you get an influx of people. And they come and they know, they don't know anything, they're not from the area, you know? And this, this is kind of who that's targeted to. Because the people who need, the people who are here, who, you know, who are already kids out of a homeless shelter, and we, we know, generally, they're already, or they've been to the front house seventeen times, they're not allowed back. They already know where to go. But, you know, something like this is more targeted to people like Leslie said. And that's my understanding from what I've heard about this practice, is people who come in, don't necessarily know, you know, this is, this is a good first step, you know?
Okay. This is Marie, and this is a suggestion I have. I counted six groups here altogether. Eight, nine groups, and there's, um, six of us, if we don't count Dwayne, because I think Dwayne is already saturated with his job. Anna, is it okay if I include you as number six?
It depends on what--
Okay, oh, this is what I'm going to suggest, I've suggested before I try to volunteer you. And that is that we each take an area that we're like the most interested in. I'm willing to take, uh, one, not two, we'll need three people to take two. All the rest will be one each. And that, that's the area we're going to focus on, because it would be terrible if you called medical services, I called medical services, and she called medical services, and by that time, they don't want to hear about our committee anymore. We've harassed them.
I don't even really get into, when I was calling all these numbers, I just kind of said, okay, this is so is-- I didn't even explain who I was, I said, okay, what's the name of your agency, what services do you provide? I'm just checking into it.
Yes, Leslie, but I'm going to identify myself and say, we're updating a flyer and we'd like your, your input. We're doing it for the Committee on Disability Issues for distribution in greater-- How far is this going to be dispersed all over the, the county?
This, no, this is going to be in Bisbee. This is just the one--
This is just the Bisbee one?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so, thank you, we needed to know that.
Yeah.
Okay, um, do I have any volunteers, I'll put it here. Who would like to take, do you like, does that idea work for people?
It does.
If we're already having people leaving, if we split this up, there'd be no point. We're just going to have a lot of gaps if we have our people not here and leaving at the same time. We wouldn't get all the information needed. For as much as I want this--
Before we--
Well, I understand that, but I think some people won't take on, or can't, or, I mean, we can do what we can for now, but I think we should either wait till we get more people in new or otherwise.
Well, my suggestion would be that the person who could not follow up would contact the chairperson and, or the vice chair in this case, and say, Leslie, this is Marie. I'm having to leave sooner than I expected.
Marie, I'm residing too.
As of December.
We're both, no, I'm residing probably in the next week.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Those huge gaps.
So this is Tori's suggestion. Without giving these topics specifically to each person where they may fail, as Philip has graciously pointed out, possibly we could review this, just have it reviewed, I mean, nobody's going to miss anything. I can call all these numbers, it's not a hardship. Oh, come on, Marie, there's not that many on there.
I've got a front in the back. I have a month.
And if I, if I might, just by looking at it and knowing some of the numbers, I can tell you that most of them are correct. The ones you may have to delve into are, are some of the more like the state agencies, because every time you, you, you read wrong, they change their name. But the, the hospital, AA has been the same number for four name years around here. That hotline is the same hotline.
And as Leslie has pointed out as well, it is just a quick phone call to verify name and number. And it is the rest of the members, if they are able to review the document to see if they can add any other services and numbers new to it. I will say that I am willing to call all the numbers and do it by name.
Tori, would you want to have one other person assist you in this? It would not have to be an ad hoc committee, it would be two people.
I, I--
Or not.
I'm, uh, Philip, I, most of these are already known at work, like the food ones are all right, because that's-- Well, I, I do all the work for them, for St. John's, except, except for those officials, I work with all of them. When most of this other one is, yeah, I can easily check this as I'm going along, so I mean, I don't mind.
Right, and you may have ideas, Philip, to add, which would be very beneficial.
Would you two like to, could I, to stick my neck out and ask if the two of you would work together, particularly with you each other and create this? Tori, I'm trying to take off, I'm trying to take off some load on your shoulders, Tori.
Right, again, I see it not as that great of a burden when I have a month to do it.
Yep.
You have longer than that, because we'll not be having another meeting until January of next year.
Well, then, we have plenty--
We'll have two, two and a half months. Okay, so, uh, everybody comfortable with that decision that we have two people? Yeah, very. Well, that looked a lot easier than we thought on that one. Thank you very much for, Leslie, for giving direction on that. Okay, item number six.
Um, actually, Kelly Colley, oh, our firm meeting, and she was unsure if she could make it. So she asked to have it rescheduled. I told her that you definitely will be able to get that rescheduled.
Okay, so item six is tabled. Um, do we have, I'm trying to remember, do we have to have a vote on table and something, I think we do.
Yes.
Um, all right, do I have a motion, uh, can I put Dwayne, are you allowed to make motions? Not even, okay. Um, my name's Marie Minor, and I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to move that we table item number six to the next meeting, the next scheduled meeting. Second by--
Trudy.
Trudy.
I didn't hear, you said Dwayne, Kelly said, she said she couldn't come.
Yeah, well, the, they were closing the roads off and on. And the only way she knows how to get here is through the back way, where they were closing the road quite often. Um, the, the road between Calum and East, they got pretty nasty.
I can imagine, so we're not out there having to travel.
Yeah, I, you know, some of us, and, and I don't know specifically if she grew up around here, but she went her whole life to the southeast Arizona, so I know a thing or two about when to drive to water and when not to. And I'm not going to put that on anyone who doesn't, so.
And I'll point out, if anybody goes on Highway eighty-two Douglas, allow for the fact that one moment you're going sixty-five and the next minute you're going zero, you're stopped.
I had an accident--
That's why I was late today.
Right, in front of me, right there.
So, watch that, Highway eighty-two Douglas. All right, item, okay, all those in favor, if in this there was any discussion, I'm going to call a motion. All those in favor of tabling it to the next scheduled, I write that word, scheduled, meeting? If all those in favor, say aye.
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 And, and can Anna not vote either?
No.
Oh, okay, thank you. Five to zero. Okay, item number seven. Discussion on grad students from the University of Arizona School of Public Health's visit to Gore Park Lunch to include discussion on the results of surveying the people about their perceptions of access to mental health resources in Bisbee. This is Leslie Johnson.
Okay, I distributed the handout to all of you with, and this, and I'll just read the introductory paragraph here. On August eighth, twenty eighteen, ten university of Arizona graduate students conducted interviews in pairs with twenty-four area residents in downtown Bisbee. This was at Gore Park Lunches. Respondents were asked three questions regarding their opinions on mental health care in the Bisbee area. All respondents either had sought mental health services for themselves or knew someone who had received services. And this is just a summary of what those grad students found. And, um, so I guess, I don't know if we really have time tonight to read through this, all of us, and then discuss it. It's up to the committee. But I, I've read through this and I feel like there's some really good information. Do you want to give one?
Yeah.
There, there really is, um, there's a, and this is what I've been hearing about a lot of other stuff I've been working on too, me and Parry, it's very, it's very similar, um, you know, distrust, you know, and, and especially with the, you know, the police, and then, and then, you know, I would go on the other, the two, the police also, they have, have their own precautions when it's dealing with, um, mental health issues. However, the CARP has been able to address that. They, they have a, they have a number that's, that's kind of reserved for them to deal with that too, that helps out, cuts through all the BS, as it were. You know, if they have a problem, they can reach somebody right away. And some, the agencies around here have adopted a no wrong door, a no wrong door policy. So that when there is an issue or when there's a problem, whether there's somebody with a mental or substance that can use problem, and law enforcement calls a number, they, that person that calls will get help, one way or the other. They're not going to get turned away, they will find a way to help them. And that's, it's been a local breakthrough, actually, that's really helped out. And now it's just getting people past the stigma and being willing to use that. You know, and that's going to, that's going to take something else altogether. But yeah, this is a lot of good information about this. You know, I've heard, the thing about the mobile clinic, I've heard that, you know? You know, because whoever, and I, and I'm not sure why, um, but, but it really, really is, um, it's, it's, it's a, it's a good thing, because people don't seem to trust, you know? It, it goes back to, you know, the, you know, their own mental facilities at that point.
I'm curious, how many people access the--
Tori.
Yes.
I, you know, I've been told, I've been told that the numbers are growing. Um, it's, but it is, it's the same thing, it's getting people past that, you know? And, but the people who have reached out were in pretty bad shape, and they've been able to, you know, some of the people who, who come in like, whoa, whoa, whoa.
So you're very successful.
And that's, and that's the thing, it, it's, it's like, it's sort of like the, the angel initiative, you know, while there's only been one person locally, and then one person in Douglas, because we have to, you have to get past that, that initial stigma of, well, it's law enforcement, they're not going to, the person in Douglas really, really needed the help, we're ever told, and they were able to get help right away. The person in, here in Bisbee, needed the help, but then made the decision later on, I'm not quite ready. You know, so, I, I, you know, I think just being, it's, it's more difficult to judge success on something like this when you can't get a finite number. You know, it just depends on, well, how we made this as available as we can. I think that's a success, as opposed to how many people are using it, you know, because we can't control that, you know?
Right.
Any of these programs.
What if there weren't there the day that that person--
Exactly, you know, you know, it's, it's very hard. This is, this is not a statistics type of thing. This is a, you know, are we, are we doing the most we can? And I, I, I think a lot of this is just we can, you know, we are, just trying to find, you know, the, find teams of these things. You know, and a lot of that is going to be outreach, I, I believe that's going to be the term, is getting the people who do provide the services, whether they're volunteer or whatever, to, uh, to look at some of the things that are being done that, that they are good, not necessarily, just because it's not their idea or the way they want it, giving, you know, I'm not a fan of, I'm not a fan of harm reduction. I come from a different school of thought, an older school of thought when it comes to things like that. But that's, that's my thing, that doesn't necessarily mean that I'm going to bash on that. You know, it's like, well, let's give every, everybody that has every option available, and whatever works for them works, you know? And that's, I can't make that decision, none of us can make that decision for anybody. So, so, yeah, I do, I, I like, I like things like this, because, you know, it does, it helps, especially getting this information back in to the people who do the work, you know? And, and, you know, something like this, I can bring toward my, me, since I'm at the CARP, these are things I can bring towards that group of people too, and say, hey, you're, you know, I think it'd be, if, with your permission.
Oh, yeah, this is all anonymous data that was collected by grad students, and I don't think it would have been shared with me if there was any kind of HIPAA violation.
Yeah, I, I just, especially since the people who brought the, you know, mobile clinic there, some of these things that I can, hey, I mean, they, they want that feedback, and they haven't been getting it from the people they've been serving.
And I've reached out to them and said, I've, I've got feedback, and then there was some staff turnover and--
Staff, not only that, they moved.
Yeah.
You know, they, they're doing a million-dollar renovation, so.
Marie speaking. I'd like to point out some failures in the way this was done. And so, for instance, uh, the mobile clinic, it could be very educational thing. Instead of saying just mobile clinic, they would say the Copper Queen.
It's actually--
It's Chiracau.
Yeah.
Okay, but there's a Copper Queen, uh, the one that does physical. Oh, that's right, we're doing mental health. So it would have been good if they said Chiracau. So this could have been a, an educational piece of information. Chiracau Clinic provides that. Um, the other issue that I had is, um, on the back page of the first one, there's a recap facility that offers mental health services, but you have to be drug or alcohol addicted to get them. A lot of people do not think of alcohol as a drug, so it'd be nice to actually separate it out, drug or alcohol addicted, because some of the facilities in town are set up that way, that if you don't have one or the other of them, like, uh, the Women's Transition Project, you're in trouble.
Just, this is Leslie, just for clarification, that's in quotes, so I think that was probably a direct quote that someone--
They could have put parentheses behind it, or alcohol addiction.
But if they're quoting someone, Tori is speaking, if they're quoting someone, you can't add a little statement, because you're trying to make what they say what you want.
Right, but you can expand it by putting alcohol addiction, and it's not in quotes.
Um, she's speaking, most of it's generalized, because that's what most of you is, like I said, I work with a lot of these people out there with food and that, and they, it's the same thing. Those are the words that they would say all the time, so I would stick with the jargon, what they would say, then what we would commonly say.
Okay.
That was still-- On their need for direct outreach, people with limited mental and emotional, and granted, this was supposed to be set up mostly as mental health, but, um, this isn't in quotes. I would have added the word, and physical capacity are expected to seek out services. Because that, some of the times, the issue is not that you're, you're mental, but you're mental and physical, and that's still the same problem of getting access to services.
Well, well, I, I would, you know, um, this is Dwayne. This was a study on mental, um, on mental health care, not necessarily--
Right, but doesn't it drive you crazy if you're physically ill and you can't get, get, get your health, your resources?
Well, that's what I was saying, that's not the, I, I, I believe it's a great, I think the university did a great study. And they went by whatever they were given was mental health, and that's what they worked on.
Exactly, and this is Tori speaking, I don't think it's a wise use of our time to critique their document. I think it has--
But there is, there is one that is extremely important, Anna, if you don't agree with me, then we're going to have to disagree on that one. The sentence where it says, availability of counselors of preferred gender, I think it also should have meant transgender issues there, because if a person--
Can you just say one more thing, please?
Could I finish my sentence, though? The, the second sentence for that one? If a person is a transgender, um, they may not want to be a person that goes to see. If I was, uh, if I'm a man that was created to a woman, I may actually want to prefer to see a man, even though I'm a trans and I have a woman body, I might still feel more comfortable with a man. And when you don't address transgender issues, just like our president wants to eliminate the concept of transgender.
Okay, that's a little outside the--
I would like to see that added.
It says, but it's, it, we can't add or subtract anything from there.
No, I'm talking about just perception, so I'm not saying you have to--
But it is, but it is, no, but it's preferred gender, whether or not that-- Go ahead, Tori.
Thank you, I think we're saying the same thing. Marie, this is Tori speaking. This document was presented by the U of A grad students, so any dislike of their verbiage or anything else would be better served for you to take up with them, not to rewrite the document as we see it.
It's mostly, I wanted to raise consciousness on the concept that transgender wasn't, they probably did not approach one transgender person and got their--
But we're, again, Tori, that speculation--
Yeah, we don't know. But I, I will bring it up, is there some way I can contact them? And I will not do it as a member of the committee, I'll do it as a private individual.
I will ask my boss if she's open to feedback, because she's the director of the health department for Cochise County, and she may not have time. But I will send her an email tomorrow and let her know that you have some issues with some of the verbiage in this, and if I hear back from her, and that's a big if, Marie, I'll put you in touch with her.
What's her current name?
Her name is Carrie Langley. Her name is Carrie Langley, but I'm telling you, she is studying for her PhD right now, and she runs an entire county department, and-
Does she have an assistant director?
And, no, she doesn't have an assistant director, she has an assistant, yeah, she's incredibly busy, and I really don't think you're gonna really get a response.
And don't be very minute with her, man, as well as with the childcare consultants, yeah, she's a very busy woman.
She supervises.
And I would not be allowed to contact the person who is coordinating the University of Arizona graduate students?
I don't think it's worth it.
Especially because, I can't believe I'm gonna debate this, when they say preferred gender, that covers that.
Right.
Whatever that person pref- whoever, whatever gender that person prefers to speak with.
They, Tori speaking, in my interpretation of the document, they took care of that, as Dwayne said, by saying, whatever you prefer, you're transgender, whatever you prefer.
I see what you mean.
Like, if you're male, female, if, you know, if you want your dog to look at you.
And, and I, you know, without knowing specifically who they talked to, I believe there are transgender people in Bisbee, that they probably would've reached out to one or two, um, it's considering they were giving, you know, because I know of, a few myself, so.
And, yeah, and just to make one last point, this is Leslie, this was two months ago, this assignment is over and done, and these grad students have forgotten about it.
We're on to the next thing.
Hopefully, the graduated, they just did announcements, but, yeah.
Who's, I, I, I commend the work that they did on, I'm not trying to be a thorn in the side, just to be a thorn in the side, no, I do commend the fact that they, they did touch a lot of points.
So, Tori speaking, I think it would benefit all of us, and, during our time between meetings, to review this carefully, to see if we kept any ideas that we can bring forth at the next meeting, and, um, utilize the document as written, as for what it is. It's my idea.
Okay, Dawn, where are we now? That's eighty minutes, I'm looking for the meeting agenda. Okay, we're at the point where members' comments, any comments with your name?
Tori, I'll be sad to see you leave, Leslie, as well as you, Marie. We were just getting our stride, but hopefully, as we grew, Phillip and Trudy and Dwayne and all of us can carry on.
Miss Phillip, I apologize for missing prior meetings, my health and all, but, um, hoping to do as much as I can here, with whatever I have, and just hope.
Since I won't be here at the next meeting, Marie speaking, um, I'd like to know if anybody would like to take on following up with differently abled, visually and hearing impaired people? Um, that's, was something that both Leslie and I decided that we had too much on the agenda, so it wasn't being dealt with, but is there anybody else that would like to take on the mantle and see about whether there are a significant number of people in the community that fit that label, and whether these people would be much more involved in coming to city council, or committee meetings, or commission meetings, if we made it more possible for them to either see or hear?
This is Tori, we're continuing elaborate, and that's what's happened, discussion, I'm sorry, I can't discuss it.
Okay.
Almost fell into it, Dwayne.
I guess afterwards, see me, and, and, yeah, so that's my, I'm putting it out there as I'm hoping somebody doesn't let that fall through the cracks. Hearing and speech, hearing and visually impaired. Any other member comments? Staff comments?
No.
No? Is that where you would say anything, Anna?
I have not had good comments.
Am I allowed to raise a question at this point, or probably not?
No.
No, okay. After the meeting, Anna. All right, future agenda, agenda items, I would, I'm going to tentatively put it on here about Marie putting on hearing and visually impaired, um, and if it doesn't get put on the next agenda, I'm like, oh, it's okay. Anybody else, any future agenda items, um, you might wanna think back to a meeting, two meetings ago, one meeting ago, where there were things that were left off of it?
I'm, this is Leslie, I'm looking at that list, electing a new chair and vice chair is gonna have to be on that agenda. Also, uh, coming up with whatever holes we find in the Guide to Services and updating that is gonna have to be on that agenda. We discussed, anyone presenting ideas they get from more carefully looking at these interview responses could be on that agenda.
Would you repeat that, please?
Uh, looking more carefully at the responses to the mental health interview that we ran on August eighth, and see if we have any ideas that come from that could be on that agenda. And, when we have a date for that, maybe talking to another, um, again?
Indeed, yeah, I have her down, since we're bringing it forward, I'll get Kelly to say to the board.
No, it was not, Marie's speaking. Something, yeah, I'll be the two side of your problem. I'm bad. Okay, anybody else with something on the agenda that you can think back to that meeting before and what we left out? Anyone else?
No.
How about you? Okay, um, well, then, could I have a call for a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn? Trudy?
Seconded, Leslie.
Any discussion on it?
No.
Just a second. All right, call to the motion, call the motion, um, those in favor of adjournings, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Nay? Oh, no, say nay. I'm a, I'm an aye. So it passes five to zero. True.